All right, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Secretary Mathias, did you call the roll? Reverend Mathias, here. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Dr. Randles?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Faub?
Present.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Baker?
Here.
All right, some of us are here and some of us are present. So, I get a motion to approve the agenda.
Post-approve it then.
Support.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 In the post. All right, our first item is celebration.
Reverend Baker, members of the board, I would like to ask Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to come forward. Good evening Superintendent Neal, Reverend Baker, and board members. This evening, we're really excited to share with you the winners of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest for this year. Today I have with me Mr. Rodney Martin, who is from Norcross, Warner, Norcross, and Judd, and he's going to be introducing the recipients of the award. They're also going to be reading their essays to you this evening.
Thank you very much Reverend Baker, Superintendent Neal, and members of the school board, thank you very much. This is the 11th time we've come before you to present to you the winners of the Martin Luther King Essay Contest for sixth graders. We're very grateful to Carmen Fernandez at the Southwest Community Campus for helping us every year administer this conference, and we obviously couldn't do it ourselves. We're happy to announce that this year we had nearly 300 submissions, and they came from 10 schools in the district, which I think was the most schools we've ever had participate. Each of the essays addressed one of three writing prompts that we submitted to the children. More than 50 attorneys and staff members from Warner, Norcross, and Judd, and our eight offices around the state read the essays and judged them. We were, as usual, quite impressed by the quality of this year's essays, and you'll see that in the four winners who are going to read to you this evening. We also, in addition to the four winners, we had 20 students who will receive commendation as honorable mention, and we'll present those to them this evening. But if I may, I'm going to bring forward each of the students who were the winners. The first would be Nico Hinsman from the Center for Economicology.
They were planning on attending, but we haven't seen them yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but her teacher's here.
Very good. Well, then, we'll move on to the other student who tied for second runner-up, Kanaya Brown from Riverside Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just take your time.
You'll be fine.
My story is called "The Unseen Staircase." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., what are we going to do with all this violence in our world? You once said, "Faith is taking the first step even when you can't see the whole staircase." I need to keep this in my mind when I look around at our world. To me, your words mean believing in something that you've never actually seen before. Violence is killing our world. Darkness and evilness is eating up our lives. People are shooting at students in schools, bombing cities, and fighting each other. People are abusing their kids, and some are raising them to hate anyone with skin color different than theirs. I need to keep believing that there are solutions to these problems. I hope we have enough time and courage to figure out what they are. My teacher says, "When you often live what you learn." Dr. King, sometimes you can't change this already in someone's head. Some people are taught to hate others that are different than they are, like different race than theirs. We have too many people who use guns in the wrong ways or situations. But if you think about it, we need to have power to protect ourselves too. But not in the wrong way. We have to defeat them with our power. That power is kindness. Rosa Parks and Dr. King both were always kind enough when they fought fighting injustice. Rosa Parks fought for her seat because she thought it was unfair for African-Americans to be required to sit in the back of a public bus. But she wasn't the unkind one. Dr. King, you once said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." I know it was dark then and still dark now. We need the light you once shed a long time ago to come back. I'm just a sixth grader at Riverside Middle School. At my school, our behavior specialist, Mr. Smiley, just had a terrible thing happen in his life. His son recently died in a car crash. I feel for him. I know he won't want me to feel bad for him. He would want me to focus on scores, and he always tried to keep us focused on positive each day. I know these things happen in life. Life is imperfect. Yet even when you, Martin Luther King, were in a horrible situation, you tried to remember to see the whole picture even when it wasn't done yet. I hope I can hold on to my belief that faith is good, things will carry on with me the rest of my life. I hope I can be like you and see the whole staircase and have trust with every step I take.
That was amazing, thank you.
You're very nice.
The first runner-up this year also comes from Riverside Middle School. It is Deshaun Fields. Deshaun?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Betrayal and beyond. Do you stick up for those in need? A powerful statement by Dr. Martin Luther King says it all. There comes a time when silence is betrayal. If you have a friend, and somewhere down the road that friend needs your help, but you don't offer it, what would Dr. King have to say to you? There is a main reason that this statement has so much impact on my life. My dad hasn't been in my life permanently, and I haven't seen him in a long time. I text him, and he doesn't reply. He hasn't betrayed me physically, where I don't see him at all. He has not been available when it was possible for him to be. He has betrayed his son, a thing Dr. King would not be very fond of. I still love my dad. That's a thing Dr. King would be exceptionally proud of. From my experiences and my studies of the wonderful Dr. King, I feel that someday I would be able to have a positive impact on my family by being the best father I can be. I don't ever want it said of me that my children suffer the silence of betrayal. I don't want my children to have their father not there when they are going through the difficult or stressful times. Kids need their dads when they first enter preschool or when they make their first sports team. Even things like relationships can use advice from a father. Then there's the start of high school and college, when no father figure around for support and love. I don't want any of those negative possibilities. Dr. King would be very proud of those looking out for others, and he would be very thankful to those putting others in front of themselves. He would also be very appreciative of those who defend America. He'd include all the military groups, SWAT teams, our local police officers, and of course, the mighty firefighters. They do their jobs, just like Dr. King did. He spent his life defending America from himself. While I gave a negative example of the impact this statement has had on my life, it also has provided me a positive one. Dr. King's words remind me how important it is to be there for others. It must have had the same effect on many other people. So for those of you who are always there, trust me when you are needed the most, what would Dr. King have to say to you? I think he would say, "Well done."
Nice job.
Now, I'm proud to present to you the grand prize winner of this year's Essay Contest, Tuanie Smith from Riverside Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A letter to Dr. King. Dear Dr. King, most of the 7 billion people on the earth still miss you. Even though you are in a better place, I know you would be willing to help us out like you did in the 1960s. I have to give you credit, because even though the world is not a perfect place to be in, you put a giant footstep towards equality in the world. People should keep remembering what you did for our country. You always knew that the most dangerous condition for people is ignorance. Many people have forgotten this, so of course, there are some groups of people going against what you still for. Now, my question for you is, would you do it all over again? I can take a pretty good guess that you would. Your answer will be yes, because you care for all the people on this earth today. What I don't know is what you would advise us to do about ISIS and terrorist people killing innocent ones. What about people who think that only one kind of life matters? Do you think your nonviolent approach will work in 2016? Many of us are trying it, but nothing positive is happening. People keep getting killed every day. Dr. King, I'm not trying to ruin your nonviolent dream, but in 2016, it is not working out so well. Back then, did you have so many people with anger management issues? We do. Some people with anger issues today damn like your nonviolence. They will hit back, shoot back, do anything to get revenge. I need some advice to help our world. Getting advice from you is like getting advice from Stephen Curry on shooting a basketball. Well, Dr. King, I guess I better close now. I sure appreciate you taking the time to read this letter in heaven. So, Dr. King, I will think of you when I'm in a heated situation. I will ask myself what you would do or say. Hopefully, I can see you in person in heaven one day.
Our four winners will each receive a certificate of deposit, a gift card to the Schuler Bookstore, and certificate of participation. And each of the honorable-mentioned students who I will recognize will also receive a gift card and a certificate of participation. And actually, every student who wrote an essay will receive a personalized certificate of participation. So if I may, I'd like to introduce the honorable-mentioned students, and they'll be by school. From Elgin Middle School, Anthony Palmer. From the Center for Economicology, Patricia Barazza. DeKlawn Bradley. And if I mispronounce names, I apologize. Matthew Thebo. From Riverside Middle School, Maia Shab Brown. Olivia Fraseca. Aleah Jackson. Phelan Johnson. Nathalia Landero. Dulce Masregus. From Shawmat Hills K-8, Jakari Kendricks. Also from Shawmat Hills, Angelina Nair. And Nancy Vicario. And from the Southwest Community Campus, Abeline Gabrielle. Elizabeth Delasquez. Good girl, Elizabeth, congratulations. Nozali Maxhabi. Arlyn Rodas. Ida Sanchez. Alana Thompson. And Nadia Zapatero. Thank you very much. I'm going to take the students out in the hallway. We're going to take a big group picture, and we'll try to be quiet doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to also thank the staff and the parents that are here. Without you, this couldn't happen, as it does happen every year. So thank you so much to staff and parents. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
It's a quick one. Thank you so much. I'm sure your colleagues would have been in tears reading all of those essays. And I think that, to be honest, I think that these should be open letters to our community and our leaders and our presidential candidates. And the insight that you all have is incredible, and the way you articulate it is so important. But to be honest, I think that Dr. King would be in tears to see what you're seeing. And so, it's unfortunate that, you know, but I feel very confident that you all will become leaders and challenge the rest of us, so thanks.
Thank you very much.
What a great job, this kid.
Yeah, I know.
Awesome. He's more serious than adults. It's amazing.
We can't, is it possible that we should get those posted on our website?
We'll ask permission from the board.
Yeah, I think that's certain.
I'll have John post them.
All right, well.
Nice job.
And we'll proceed, and probably won't have quite as much insight the rest of the evening. But hopefully, I just talked to Superintendent Neal, and we might try to figure out a way to get some permission to post those. I think that our community should read those, so. All right, the next item is report of the student representative of the board, and we have no student representatives tonight, so we will move on. Next is a public comment for board agenda items. Is there anyone?
I don't have any in my presence, so.
It doesn't look like we have any, so we'll move on to the secretary's report.
All right, we have a couple of things. One is theme schools and centers of innovation application deadline. The theme school and centers of innovation applications are due February 29th. Please go to apply.grps.org or stop by any other schools to fill out an application. The other thing we want to inform the public on is our committee meetings, the schedule. The schedule for the board meetings, committee meetings, have been finalized. Please note that the following committee scheduled will take place during the 2016 calendar year. The Academic Achievement Committee, the third Tuesday of the month at 9:00. Ad-Hoc Legislative Committee, the third Tuesday of the month at 10:30. And then the Finance Committee, fourth Monday of the month at 8:00 AM. All meetings will take place in the board chambers here and recorded for public view. Meetings are posted to the website in the prominent display case outside of the administration building. Please note that the dates may vary if the meeting falls on the district closed date. The meeting schedule can also be found on the district website via the www.grps.org backslash paperless.
Boe.
Boe, I'm sorry. That's all I have.
All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, and members of the board. I would like to ask Dr. Ron Gorman to come forward, please.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Reverend Baker, members of the board, Superintendent Weatherall Neal. This evening, I'm here to share a report on the GRPS High School Student Council. And this is a very important entity in the Grand Rapids Public Schools comprised of 22 high school students from Union High School, Ottawa Hills City, Innovation Central, UPREP, CA Frost, Grand Rapids Learning Center, Southeast Career Pathways, and Grand Rapids Montessori. We have monthly meetings to discuss various GRPS topics. Last month's meeting, we talked about school spirit, technology, diversity, standardized assessments, school lunch, facilities, and many more. This is an opportunity for the folks at Grand Rapids Public Schools to hear what the students have to say about how well we're doing in our organization. But this year, we have a two-pronged approach to our work. One is hearing from the students, and secondly is allowing the 22 members of the student council to experience leadership opportunities within our community. In December of last year, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, Dr. Baker, and some executive cabinet members gave the students a tour of Franklin Campus and shared with them what all the different departments do. And Superintendent Weatherall Neal spent a nice chunk of time, as well as Dr. Baker, really sharing their roles and the great work you've done with the Transformation Plan. In February, we are going to visit the Grand Rapids Police Department and work with the chief of police. We have a couple of individuals on the student council who are interested in law enforcement. In March, we are visiting Grand Valley State University, and the host will be Grand Valley State University's president. In April, we are visiting Lansing, and our host will be Senator David Hildebrand, so we're excited about that. And then, what the students seem to be really, really excited about is in May, our hostess is Mayor Rosalynn Bliss. So she is going to listen to the students' thoughts and share what city government looks like. This is a very important entity, a very important group of students that really drives the work of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and the students keep it real. And we ensure that their words get back to the superintendent, get back to our cabinet, and ultimately get back to you, so we can ensure that we're doing the very best for our students every single day. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so how long has this been in existence?
So, as you know, last year was the first year we had more of a comprehensive process to pick the student reps, but there were so many wonderful candidates, and we said, "How can we empower those individuals who are the leaders in their buildings?" So last year was more of, "Come on in, tell us what's going well in your school." This year is, "Tell us what's going well, tell us what needs improvement, and let's get our leaders out into the community so they can see themselves in these roles, these very important roles in the community." And our hope is that folks will go out to Grand Valley and then come back to their schools and share all the wonderful resources that Grand Valley has to offer. Our hope is that they will go to the police department and share some insights as to what the police department does on a daily basis for the community of Grand Rapids. So we're just ratcheting it up, and hopefully, next year, we'll add another piece to it that we haven't thought about yet, but it's a great group.
I think it's fantastic just to create a concept of the district as a whole. I think often, you know, adolescents get in their own schools and don't have a sense of the district as a whole and how there's such a, you know, a rich community of different communities.
Yeah, and what I like about it is we have a couple of students from alternative education sites.
Good.
And actually, one is on the mayor's youth council as well.
Right.
So just because you're in alternative education doesn't mean that you cannot be successful.
That's right.
And those students have a voice as well.
How are the students chosen?
Their principal recommendations. And our hope is that we're not always getting, you know, 4.0s and 35 ACTs. We're also looking for students who are on the cusp of success.
Do the students visit their own schools? Do they go back to the body known outside of the group themselves?
So actually, in many instances, for instance, last year, we rotated the sites. So we held meetings at Union, held meetings at Ottawa Hills, held meetings at City, because you're only familiar with your own school.
Absolutely.
So this body really represents all of the students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. And in some instances, one thing may be going wonderfully at one site and maybe having some challenges in another site. And they're really the voice of all students within the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, it's incredible, so. And Ron was out. Ron is training 10 months ahead of time for this turkey trot in November. I saw he was racing up the hill. I was going to run with him, but then, he's in good shape, so anyway. All right, kindergarten, here I come.
Dr. Baker and members of the board, I'd like for John Hemholt to share what we're doing for our new students coming in.
Thank you.
Reverend Baker, members of the board, Superintendent Weatherall Neal. Just a little update, we have our kindergarten, here I come, fast approaching. This year, we moved it up. The year before, we had done it in March, but that didn't really make sense, because the theme school and center of innovation application deadline is at the end of February. So we moved it up to February 24th. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Grand Rapids Public Museum. It's a great night for parents that can bring their kids. It's free admission to the museum, including free admission to the planetarium, and all of our schools will be there. We also have representatives from our curriculum, from the ELL after-school athletics and others that will be there. Parking is free in the dash lots, 7 and 9, or it's $5 prepay at the museum lot. And this is really focused, obviously, on students that are starting kindergarten this fall, where they have to be age five by September 1st. And we've been doing all the usual communications. They get hundreds of individuals that come out for this, and this is a very well-oiled machine. But again, it's part of our ongoing student retention recruitment efforts, and this comes on the heels of what was a very successful School Choice Expo last week, where it was packed from start to finish and even after the 6:30, you know, close of session. So we're feeling really strongly about the level of interest that we're hearing about our schools.
Good.
Only other thing I'd add, and I think Julie asked me to put this, was count day is next week Wednesday. So we have the winter count coming up next week, Wednesday, and we'll be doing a similar kind of a, you know, get out the count, helping to ensure that students understand the importance of being in school every day through the year, on time, ready to learn, but also why it's important because of how schools are funded in the state of Michigan.
All right, thank you very much. Next is the, there are no action items, so we'll move on to the consent agenda grouping. Can I get a motion to support?
So moved?
Support.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Baker? Yes. All right, there are no discussion items. So next is public comment for any items, not agenda or agenda.
I don't have any.
Okay. Superintendent's comments. Superintendent's comments.
No comment, Dr. Baker.
All right. Board member comments. I'm going to start with Vice President Slade there, since she had...
Can't drink my water?
Work this way.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
I said Vice President Slade, not Vice President Ross.
Used to be.
Used to be.
No comment. Thank you.
No comment.
Pastor Moody?
No comment.
Mr. Legrand?
No comment.
Doctor Flores?
I'd like to thank you for the post that you sent on Facebook about providing kids opportunity to understand and study their ethnic history and how they've contributed to America and how the Stanford study increased achievement in that game, in that area, and encourage our district to review that. I think that understanding what our place in America is and how we've contributed to this great nation empowers youth, and I think we had a great demonstration of that this evening. You know, there was a time when people like Dr. Martin Luther King would not have been studied in our district, you know, for their efforts and their contributions. And there is a movement in this country today to try to sterilize the content that is being taught to children, to exclude people like Dr. Martin Luther King and Assesor Chavez and Dolores Huerta and others that have made this nation great. So you can't forget about the civil rights movement and what impact it had in advancing equality. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That was definitely a powerful message from the students. I have, actually, I do, we should have mentioned this earlier in announcements, due to, I'm not sure what people remember, but due to our, actually, we have a work session that will start prior to our next regularly scheduled board meeting on the 15th, that we are starting at, I think, 5:30 is what is scheduled. Also, we are having a special work session for the superintendent evaluation on February 29th, which means that we will not have a work session this coming Monday. So we're canceling that work session in lieu of those two extra work sessions this month. All right? And with that, we're adjourned. Thanks.